This is the December 12th, 2024 meeting of the Kushner Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda today is the secretary's report from November 14th. Does anyone have any qualifications or questions on those minutes? Not, we just made motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next is the budget.
So, we are getting close to the end of the year. We had passed our Thanksgiving holiday, which gives union members a little bit of more of a increase in their pay because of the holidays. So, as you can see, for the director and the patron services supervisor, we are right where we should be. The library technicians is also right where we should be, but a little too close for comfort because we do have the Christmas and New Year's holiday coming up. So, that is, there's not much room for to cover shortages or a meeting or staff meeting. So, that's where we are with the salaries. For operating, I have not received the bill yet for November for energy. And as we know, the bigger bills come in the winter. So, I'm expecting the energy line to be spent a little bit more in the coming months. The telephone bill, last meeting, I discussed how it was going to be split evenly. I've received two November's AT&amp;T bill and Verizon, and I'm happy to announce that it has been split better. So, it's more, it's fair in terms of that. I purchased a, so our flag that's outside was ripped in the February of this year, and it's been on back ordered. I finally received a flag from WBMason, and the flag was out, but I took it down yesterday because of the wind. And so, I've been spending a little, so there were some items that were spent in the office supplies. And then, I also bought another scanner for Lori because Lori sits, her desk is in the children's room. She has a laptop, but she does not have a scanner. So, this scanner will give her the opportunity to check out items to patrons if the desk is busy. It gives her ease of access to scan books, to check their records, you name it. So, I am happy to announce that we now have full, she can now check out items. The only thing she can't do is print receipts, but 99% of the time, patrons don't even care if they don't have a receipt. So, that is happening in the children's room. So, for material, I recently had a free trial for a free magazine to patrons called Book Page. So, this magazine offers book reviews, author interviews. And what I hope it does is that it gives patrons ideas of what to read next, placeholds on items so that they're aware of, or maybe find something that they, you know, never, or never came across an author before, and then there's, this author could be in this magazine. So, I paid for a year subscription for it. It was roughly $414. So, each month, we'll get 50 issues. They're at the desk, and patrons can take it. We offer it to them, and the feedback that we had for the two months was fantastic. There was a lot of interest in it, so I decided to subscribe to it. And it does count towards our material expenditure when we start doing state aid. And that's basically it for the budget. Any questions about budget?
You know the receipts make good bookmarks.
Oh, I know. You'd be surprised what we fire as bookmarks.
I know we had lots, I know we had lots of bookmarks here.
Yes. Thank you. I'm guilty.
And handy.
It is. It is.
Budget looks good. It looks right on track. Anybody have any questions? Okay, your motion will be accepted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And then, very quickly, I'm just gonna go into the monthly stats. So, our physical circulation is very similar to last year. And as you know, these months, it does decrease because of the holidays, the weather, and so forth. The only thing that went up was our DVD circulation, which I do believe is because I've been purchasing more DVDs. And then, I know I say it every month, but our e-resources, you can see eBooks, e-audio, and magazines, extremely, extremely, they've increased once again. Museum passes have also slightly increased. So, last year, we checked out four for the month of November, and this year, we checked out seven, which is pretty good for when it's not a, for not the summer. Because when it's summer, they're constantly check out, especially the parks pass. But you can see the number in total from last year, we had 6,689. And then, this year, we're at 6,677. So, very close. Once again, Hoopla is absolutely being used by our patrons. I think I mentioned it last meeting that I did put in more funds to Hoopla because we're just using it, patrons are using it. And then, I just wanted to note that our computer sessions have been pretty high. So, we had 159 login sessions on our computers, and we have been noticing some younger adults coming in to do schoolwork of some sort. So, I'm always happy when we see teenagers in here because they're the hardest to get into the library. But they're thinking of us, or they're, and they're using the computer for school purposes. Because I could see, we can see them.
So, that's it. Quickly, just about the statistics. Any questions about the statistics? Anybody? No? All right. Moving on to old business, the flower beds.
So, the Boy Scouts came and did a great job.
Yes.
And I had forgotten how fun that age group is. Because I was here with them, and I really had an awful lot of fun. So, I went to their meeting, talked to Elizabeth about this, and I went to their committee meeting and thanked them for coming. And also, we've got a commitment from them to come in the spring to clean it up again. And also to, they have a dad who's a landscaper. In fact, I play baseball with one of my kids. And they are willing to edge the flower beds, mean cut them, but not put anything there. And they'll also arrange to have the mulch put in at a cost that's gonna be around somewhere $200 to $250. So, they're willing to come in the spring whenever we're ready to have them come. But they're not an option for long-term taking care of the flower beds for a couple of reasons. They're not a big enough group to begin with. But second of all, they don't meet much in the summer. They're, you know, busy with summer camp and things like that. And also, I'll say this carefully, they did a couple of Eagle projects here in town and got stuck with maintaining them. Okay, that was very nice. Now, please continue to maintain them. And the problem is with an Eagle project is finite. It's not really supposed to go on to get forever. So, when that scout completes the Eagle project and gets passed off on it, the troop has ended up getting, I don't want to stay stuck. I'll say responsible for maintaining those. And that's been a difficult process from them. So, they're, they would be leery anyways of doing that. So, I've chatted with Elizabeth. Probably in the next couple of meetings, we'll have some more ideas and maybe what we can do.
Okay.
But the kids were great. They're willing to come again. And, you know, the whole material cost should be around $250. If we could talk friends at the library into paying for it, that'd be terrific.
Absolutely. They did a great job. It looks wonderful out there.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much to the Boy Scouts for doing that for us and for meeting with them as well. And it sounds like a great idea to get us going in the spring, you know, absolutely.
It should be.
And then, like you said, just to, we'll explore other ideas to try to figure out what to do from there. But even if, you know, they can get us started, that'd be, you know, great. Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I know it hasn't been mulched for at least a year and a half.
Right.
So, we desperately need to.
Absolutely. Be a nice refresh. That'd be good. All right. That sounds good. Thank you. Anybody else have anything else on the flower beds?
The portico is all set. Just like, huh?
That's it. That's from the list. Yes. Oh, my goodness. We installed light under the portico.
So, I. I reached out to Old Colony, and finally, the light was installed on Friday, December 6th. So, Tim from Old Colony and his students came in. They came in and looked at the project, said yes. And then, on Friday, they came in and physically installed it. And they also, I mentioned the walkway lights. There was one that kind of tipped over. They also ran a stake through one of them for us. So, at least they're upright. I went ahead and glued the tops to see how long it lasts. But he did mention that those lights should have been maybe pushed in a little bit more because the reason they're falling is they get hit by snow, mowers, who knows? All kinds of things.
People walking.
Yes. So, and I just wanted to give another shout out. On Monday, when I was leaving, I was like, it's awfully dark out here. So, as I was driving, all the lights were off on the outside. So, I was like, oh, okay. Yes. So, I come back in, and I'm like, I know they went to shut the fuse off for that area. So, I go downstairs, look, and I can't figure it out. So, I reached out to Tim, and he led me to the fuse that I needed to switch again. For some reason, yes. So, it was an emergency, and I'm really grateful that he was able to talk me through it. And it was literally just toggling a switch. For some reason, it just didn't reset to where it should have been. So, the lights were on, but it was really dangerous out there. And I couldn't even see in front of me as I was leaving the building. So, but now, I know where the switch is for the lights outside.
Good.
So, I just wanted to, I was really pleased with their work. And it was, you know, it was a simple project for them, but it was, it was good that they were here. And Tim also said that he did work in this building, and he was a student.
All right. There we go.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Well, that was a good, that was a good idea to reach out to the Old Colony students.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
They're a resource to use.
Absolutely.
And it was great, and thank you very much for coming out here and finishing, finally finishing.
The light's on too.
Bit more to go.
I mean, I haven't received the invoice, but I guess we can say it's wrapped. It's wrapped.
2024 ended on a positive note. It'll be library portico.
It's on at the library.
I know. Thank goodness. All right. Moving on to new business, the 2024 annual report.
So, the annual report is usually submitted at the beginning of the following year. I haven't had any notification about it, but I was being really proactive, and I completed at least the wording of our annual report. The statistic part, I will obviously do at the beginning of next year because we're still in 2024. But that's just numbers of circulating items, number of programs, which you have all seen when I did the financial report. The only thing that's different is this is from January to December. The state aid is from, it's the fiscal year. But when I, when that's done, and then when I get notification of when to submit this, I'll go ahead, once this is approved, and submit it. So, just the first paragraph, I just briefly talked about some changeover in the children's room positions and the importance of having a full-time position. And then, briefly talked about some of the programs that we regularly have here. And then, the second paragraph, I talked about our building issues. So, we have the pipes, the paint, and the portico. The pipes were replaced in February. The paint was, certain areas of the library, we repainted in the summer, and the portico was finally finished. And then, I also threw a little shout out to the Boy Scout troops for cleaning our flower beds, which, you know. And then, in the third paragraph, I just talked about the increase in e-resources. I feel like that is really important because I feel like we're switching maybe our model. I mean, we're still gonna physically buy books, but there's definitely an increase in e-resource usage. And then, the highlights, I just talked about our summer concerts, you know, it's very popular, the support of the Friends, our summer reading program, and some of the authors that we had this year, and some of the workshops that we also had in the community room that were sponsored by the Friends. And then, the rest is, it's just technical information about state aid, the libraries, what we offer. So, most of this doesn't really change from year to year, except the museum passes. So, that was changed because I added the Father of a Children's Museum and the New Zealand Aquarium, hours of operations, staff, I just update, you know, to the current staff. And then, state aid is, the requirement is still the same. And that's basically it for the annual town report. So, if this gets approved, and then when I get the okay to submit it, I will go ahead and just submit it and have one less thing to worry about. So, any questions or anything I should edit, add on the town, on the annual report?
This is what goes in the book at the town.
Yes.
Did anybody have any edits to the annual report? I think you did an excellent draft. It was great.
Thank you. It's hard. I mean, I could write 20 pages of what happened this past year.
Oh, but this was great. You really highlighted that. I think you had the key things. That was really, it was really good. It was really good.
I mean, I didn't add the tent blowing.
Yeah.
It's always.
Just a quick question. When this goes to the town, do they choose the font and everything?
Yes. So, I submit a Word document and I believe a PDF, and then they format it to fit a.
In the book.
In the book.
I was just curious, and it almost seems anything we could do to highlight what the state certification is all about.
Yeah, I can, I can.
I don't know if that's possible or.
It's printed in color, but I can bold percentages and better.
Only because frankly, I didn't have a clear understanding until I got here on the board and how important that relationship is for the state and what we do and what we can do.
And if you lose it, how bad that is.
Yeah. And if you lose it, how bad it would be.
Right. And it really is bad.
Only, you know, not a criticism, but just, I mean, that's, people will ask me about it, and that's the first thing I go into it. This is why it's so important.
No, I can, I can bold things. I don't believe it's printed in color. But I can bold, and I can even add a, I don't think, if there's a part of what happens if we don't get state aid.
No, but that, but either what you've got, both in terms of just highlighting it. Just highlighting it, and that's a sort of protective rather than saying, well, you better take care of this or.
Okay, right.
We can print that verbally.
Right. Absolutely. Okay.
Great report.
Those are the only edits. Do we want to make a motion?
Motion accept. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The FY '26 budget. And so it begins.
So, it begins, the next six months or so, I'll be dealing with FY '26 budget. So, what you have in front of you is a proposed FY '26 budget. I'm gonna go line for line very briefly. So, starting with library salaries, the library director and the patron service supervisor, we are now in a union, so those rates reflect what the next step would be for FY '26, which is a 2% increase. So, that's pretty straightforward. The library techs and the children's room assistant, their contract is expiring at the end of this fiscal year. I have two previous contracts from when I was a tech and to the newest contract. And I just used what the grid had for both, which was 3, 3, 3, 3, and 2.5. So, I calculated COLAs for the techs and the children's room services, children's room assistant, and anniversary steps. So, what you see for those two lines are what I calculated with the 3% for both COLA and the anniversary. There's only one patron, there's only one staff member who would be at the last step, which is 2.5, and I did use that formula for that. So, I'm going in blindly with this because they're in negotiations for that. And then, longevity is pretty straightforward. I use the formula that is on the per contract. So, if any of these changes, you know, we'll not have to adjust. Any questions on the salaries?
Just a historical question. Somebody may or may not know. From the 2023 budget to 2024, we had a significant drop. Did we have less technicians after that?
So, the full, the 2023 to 2024, what happened is the children's room assistant used to be, it's a tech three position, that was part-time.
I got it.
It became full-time in 2024. And then, the custodian, so they kind of switched. So, the custodian no longer gets paid from the library budget. He gets paid from the town hall budget.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Energy, last year, as you know, we were, it was, it was mentioned that the rate was going up. So, we prepared for a higher energy line. Right now, it's steady. It's better than it was when the contract that they were on ended. So, I don't know if that's changing. That's, you know, it's definitely a question I need to ask the accountant or the town administrator because they would know what the contract is for our energy. But that being said, I am due keeping it at $15,000, and I think that it's a good median between the high, high number that I had last year and where it is this year. And then, building and grounds remains the same. Office equipment remains the same. Tech support, which is our contract through sales for tech support, that I get an estimate every year. So, that is what you see there and not negotiable, basically. Telephone, a little tricky. I think we went in too low last year. So, we are increasing it again now that we have a better idea of the bill. And I will admit, I thought we were getting rid of a line when we got the wireless phones, the Wi-Fi phone. I shouldn't say wireless phone because that's a different thing. The Wi-Fi phones.
Right.
But we still have AT&amp;T and Verizon, so I was wrong on that. So, this year, we're probably gonna run short on our telephone, and maybe that's why I've been really picky with the telephone bill. But, so, that's why it's increased again for FY '26. Education remains the same. Sales expenses, like tech support, is a sales contract, so that's non-negotiable. Office supplies remains the same. Children's room supplies remains the same. Materials, I opted by 1,000 in the event of the cost of things going up, you know, especially to purchase e-resources. When you purchase something like an audiobook or an eBook, you can either pay by use or just pay for like a month or 12 months. But the publishers jack it up those prices. So, and that's no fault of us or anyone. It's to make money. So, and then, travel remains the same. So, that in total, we would have a budget of $308,527. And then, just as a reminder, the MAR for FY '26 will be $303,078. So, in total, it would put us at a 3% increase from last year, which most of it is coming from contractual things. So, I believe this is a good start. I will be meeting with the town administrator tomorrow to discuss FY '26 budget and I'll see what he is going to tell me about the budget. So, I know this will change again, and this is the nature of the beast when it comes to budgeting. So, any questions that I might have missed, or there's something that looks off?
I think it's a great start. I think it's, yeah, it's a good place to be.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And if you see something, you know, I don't know if you would look at this at home when you're not here. You can always shoot me.
Well, you feel comfortable about the numbers. Here we are, and what, so as long as you feel comfortable about things staying the same and we're being able to manage.
Yes.
Just like you said with the telephone, okay, hey, we thought that was going away. That's why that's increasing, but now, going forward, it won't be increasing again. It'll just be.
I mean, if, you know, I gotta keep it, you know, the splitting of the bill that wasn't unfair. You know, this is gonna take a while to make sure that it's okay.
Right, right, right.
So, but, you know, we're, we're gonna be coming up short this FY. But everything else, you know, everything here, I have my reasoning behind it, and I feel confident behind it.
Good. Okay.
Unlike last year, it was my first time doing it, now I know.
Right. What to expect.
Yeah, good. So, but, you know, our favorite number, our most important number is here, and we are slightly above it. So.
Which is good.
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to make a motion to accept draft?
I want to make a motion to accept the budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Great job. And the director's report.
All right. So, November was pretty busy here. We had Maureen Boyle, a well-known local author who deals with true crime, especially with the Highway Killings, was here. We had over 35 people for that event, so this place was pretty busy. And then, this past Saturday, we had Alfred, who presented his book, The Friendship of New Baffet. It was well-received. We had, I believe, close to 40 people that were in here.
Wow, that's good.
Yes. He sold about 50 books.
Wow.
And people were really enjoying it. He has ties to, he grew up in the KushnerNet. So, he thought of us, and he, this was the first place he had his author talk. And he's actually, I think this weekend, he's gonna be at St. Anthony's in New Baffet. So, we were excited that he was here. Patrons really enjoyed it. And we will have a copy of his book. We also had a watercolor class with Lana Kwan. That was two Mondays ago. That was completely full, so we had 20 people in here. And all those events were sponsored by the Friends. I just want to give kudos to Lori, a children's room assistant. She went to the school twice this past month. She went to the first PTO meeting for herself. She went there, and then she, last Friday, she went to read to the first and the fifth graders at the elementary school. I guess it's an annual program where the fifth graders read to the first graders, and then there's guest readers, and then they collect pajamas. So, and then she's also going this Monday to hand out library cards to the first graders. And I believe she's doing a little story time there. So, she's been very busy, very, you know, she's doing the community outreach. And I know part of this position, the full-time position, was to get out there and to do it. And it relieves some of the pressures on me, and I am so grateful for that, especially right now. So, let's see. Another thing that has happened, but I kind of haven't mentioned it. So, in our library calendar, we use something. So in our library calendar, we use something, we used to use something called Eventkeeper, which was based out of Plymouth. The company went under. They, yes, so they basically were, they just stopped support, no refunds. They just fell off the face of the earth. And this is a company that sales has been doing, has been in contract with for over fifteen years.
Wow.
So our calendar, we use it quite frequently because we need to know what's going on. That's how we schedule things. So there are a lot of options out there, expensive options. You know, we're a tiny, we're a small library. We don't need anything fancy. So sales did pull together some different softwares. So I started a trial with HoFi, which sounds kind of funny. But, so HoFi basically took our calendar and imported it into HoFi. And then we've been using it for a free trial. So I decided to keep it because it's, one, it's the cheapest option and two, it's nice. So they are going to send us an invoice, but it's going to be prorated from January to June. And then, and I think it probably will be like around three fifty and then yearly at seven hundred dollars. When we had Eventkeeper, Eventkeeper was four hundred and ten dollars. We use, or historically, the libraries, the library has paid for Eventkeeper using state aid. So I'm not too worried about the funding for it. But we don't, we didn't need reservation systems for rooms and, you know, we can manage this on pen and paper. So that, if you do use our calendar a lot, it does look different. So you can actually, there's more options. You can narrow down, let's say you just want events for kids five to eleven. You could click on that and it will just show you the calendar. So like in the summer, it would be nice, you know, because we have a lot more programming. And if you want to see when all of the meetings are for the trustees, you can just select the board trustees. So it's a little bit more user-friendly, it's color-coordinated. It was a little bit trial and error to learn to use it, but I am happy with it and we decided to, I decided to keep it. I mean, we were thrown into this, you know, we needed a calendar, so. And there's only so much that Google Calendar can do and it just, it would have been a mess. So I also have some news to announce. We receive, are going to receive our first state aid award. So I am pleased that all the work that went into doing the survey over the summer went through. So we'll be receiving that, I believe, in January. And then the second one is either in March or April. And that one, I don't know the cost, the award amount. So for, actually, I was through the town. So November eighteenth, I attended a meeting about the master plan of the Cushingettes going to do their, redo their master plan. Their last master plan was from two thousand and eight. So there are preliminary, there are preliminary steps. So they're, you know, they desperately need community output, input of what Cushingette residents want. So you will be seeing a lot about that on the Cushingette, on the Town of Cushingette webpage. In, probably, I did say I would post on social media for them. They did reach out to me and asked if we could, I offered, you know, we do have a space if you wanted to do something or put a table out. I did say in the summer, but unfortunately, the summer is too late for their research because, you know, we could have up to three hundred people out on the lawn. So I did say that we do have some events coming up in January if they wanted to set up a table. And then they also mentioned if a program, maybe they could have like, what is your ideal town? Like for little ones? So I'm like, we're open to anything. You know, our space is available. So we'll, there'll be more, I'll have more information about that when they get back to me. And then just a couple of announcements. So next Wednesday, we have Cam Shave here for our Holiday Jazz Concert and that's at six o'clock. And that's Wednesday, December eighteenth.
I hope you'll all be here, they really could.
And then on Saturday, December twenty-first, we have a drop-in craft with Lori and they're using, they're creating icicle, icicles made out of really, really pretty glass beads. Well, not glass, but.
They look like glass.
Yes.
Sparkly.
Yes, they're absolutely beautiful. So they'll be, they'll be icicles, you can make a wreath. And then there will also be some holiday treats. And this is sponsored by the Friends of the Cushingette Public Library. And then my favorite one is on Monday, December thirtieth, we're going to have New Year's crafts. So Lori, we got some nice, really pretty thicker paper, like contact paper, so they can make hats and crowns. And then we have empty pill bottles so they can make noise makers.
Nice.
So, and that is also sponsored by the Friends. So because it's school vacation week, you know, we have it in the afternoon. So we hope people can attend and make some notes. All right, any questions about the director's report?
Oh, you've been busy.
You've definitely been busy.
That's stopped.
All right, does anyone have anything else that they want to talk about? No? Okay. Can we set the next meeting date, which is always a favorite?
I'm just going to say if you want to pick Thursdays, that's okay.
Um, do we like Thursdays better than Wednesdays?
Time indeed is fine with me. Yeah.
Do we? Is eleven thirty okay?
Eleven thirty is great.
Everyone likes eleven thirty? John, does that work for you? Eleven thirty? All right, so let me see. Yes. So Thursday, January ninth at eleven thirty.
Perfect.
Okay. We can do that. Perfect. Okay. That works. If we have no other business?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, meeting of the Cushingette Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is twelve-ten. Thank you.